Okay, I want to call the meeting to order.
Karen?
Karen?
Carl?
Here.
Charlie?
Here.
Bill?
Present.
Andy?
Here. Okay.
But. In this.
Okay, we're gonna audit loud so you guys can talk quietly for a little bit.
The task. First, there's, here's the result. And by. It's kind of been saved.
The general office.
Then.
Yeah.
Here's.
Huge.
The new old. Yeah.
I think they would have done one chill. So. So.
So. Yeah. This is the slam about. She won. She's. Yeah, so there are. Right.
Right.
It's more. That's. And then we have. We. You know. Very small. But. So. So. The. Often. We can. So. Which is. We know. We. We have. We. We nothing. But.
I got to receive what? He like to receive all that. I did today. I don't know. Technically. I. Then he. But he wonder where I'm sitting. I just want. And then he. I had to make a hand order. But. It's. Well, that's long, but now also. The. Two should go. They don't get this.
I wish. Uh. She. I'm.
There's just. Definitely. From.
Just. We. I've been. But. Oh, and then we go. Happy. And. It was open.
Oh, wow. It's. Big service.
I mean, I saw. Actually. We get that.
Yeah.
Very. Just. You know. Where. Two. Where. It's clear. Of the. Water. It was. So. Then.
Yeah.
And. Yeah. Person. We. She. It's. Something. So. She. Maybe. Like. Right. And. For. So.
Yeah. It's. Hard. For. That. I. I don't. It's. It's. Place. When. You're. Free. Yeah.
The. Same. I mean, there's always. Eight percent. All. Everything. No. Can. I don't. It's. I. Forget. It's. She. She's. Yeah. They always think it's all in charge for a while. They post a lot of other things. It was their. Possession. That.
Did. I don't. Know. Did. 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 One of my researches. Yeah. Um.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
I don't know.
But. Yeah. Sometimes. We have. And then you make. I think the. How we make still.
Yeah. Also. Yeah. Just. Those. Things. Yeah. She. Yes. Well. They. Are.
We're talking about how you. Ultimately. Please. I'm not going to be.
Thanks. Just like. Yeah. I think.
I think this is a lot of. Well. You know, you mean guys. Well.
Yeah.
Good.
So. Always. You know. It's. So. Yeah. It only. A brush. We.
Down.
Yeah. They're not changing. They're minimizing. It's something. And then I don't think. They're. It's. I go. Appreciate. So. So. Yeah.
Yeah. Because. In town, please, you don't have to. Do. It. Long say. We. All. She. Yeah.
Actually. It's. Not.
She.
Yeah. It's. Yeah. First. Right.
Yeah. Yeah. She.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well. First. We. All. We're not. Being. Um. Yes. And.
Which. She. Was.
More. And. So. Also.
And. The. She. Don't. And. I think. Or.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's. So.
Yeah. She's. She's. Very. I've said. Fun story. About. The. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But like that. Let's do all the. Ordering. For. Cards and things for my grandfather's company. That in short. It's. What. Do. So he ran. Drive. They were doing like Hawaii giveaway one thing. Hawaii trip giveaway. Yeah, my dad miraculously won. If you. So he gets back from the trip.
Sure.
My grandfather wants to see him as soon as he gets back. He's. Ready. Hold. So he goes into my grandfather's office and grandfather says. All right, so what are you gonna do with that quarter of the warehouse? It's full of.
Oh. So. They'll. Be. Back. My kids.
They were. No, it was great. I'm sorry. Great. Then they get married. Yes. Well. Always. They were still using them when I. This was. Twenty years. They were still using. So.
Thank you. Well, even. Did that. I still. Have.
Excuse me. Okay.
Listen. It's gonna be the tear. From the corner. Of course. There's Harris. What?
How old are we? Well. Why?
You don't realize. They. They have. They. After. If you know their location. Or. And they. It's. Not. Us. Going ahead. And then. For everyone. Just. And. They. They. Everybody.
Where. You're. Well. I. That. Uh. Why not? Show. The. I can't. Read. Right.
So. It's.
Remember, they did. A.
Something. At all.
Yeah, that's. Seven. Ten. So. So. And then. Yeah. There's.
Oh. Of course. I'm. The. So. I.
Go ahead.
As. I'm. You. But.
You know. And. And. Yes. And. Don't. So.
You're.
And. Hmm?
Very lovely.
He died. Yeah, use it. Before. It's. Very. Cute. Yeah. Then. They. Make. Uh. But. That was. Oh. Oh, that's. I'm. It's called. The. Yeah. Charge. Most. Yeah. Yeah. So. Oh. Right. Turn it. And. So. It can be. All. But. I. I'm. Didn't. Play. Help. First. They. They're. Okay. Sure. They. Works. Into. Well. They. Take. Their. Finish. That. She was. Racing. Oh. She would. Play. Oh. This. Basically. It goes on. So. Do. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. But. We. So. They. Have. Right. Because. I. Have. Yeah. Next. Is. Fine? So. That's. My. Great. Trying. What. Kind of. You. Change. Time. But. I try. It's. Right. To see how. And. Here. But I get. Who. I'm. Right. You. Yeah. There's. A. Town. So. It's. In. The. Other. There. She. But. What? The. Birds. And. So. Isn't.
When you say. You. Start. Very. Tight.
Right. Yeah. Well. Probably. We. Should. Be. In. She. Didn't. I'm. Maybe. She. Was. There. I said. Like. A little. I. Hope. That. She's. Like. Not. That.
A little. Way.
They will. Go. To. Well. Sounds. Like. Pretty. I know. It's. Press. Which. I was. Never. So. I can. So. We. Yeah. I think. Uh. I don't know. Can. Maybe. American. Court. Basis. This is what happens. To. Oh. We did. That. We're. When. This. Which. A. Chilling. You. Careful. Sure. Pretty. Clear. Off. It. And. I. Know. That. Wow. Any. Let. She. Anything. Say. This is. Quite. Screen. That's. So. We can. We. Get. Back. We can. Yeah. Just. We. Can. Stop. It was. And. Now. We. Do. The. That's. You. Char. And. We. I don't. Ever. They can be. Our. Job. Someone. If. I. Want. It's. It's. Your. Order. Is that. How. I. No. It's. Better. Be. Yeah. Oh. If. I. If. I. Rates. I can. You know. What. It's. Actually. It's. More. I. Three. For. Bridges. You can. Say. Well. God. So. There. I don't. I don't. That's. Today. To. Uh.
So. Seventeen. Well, that was bad. And I look up. And.
I started. The. Hold. On.
And you can see where all these fishing lines are dang. You know. And I'm like. You didn't see all those dang in there?
Yeah.
I didn't. I guess I didn't. He got it off.
It's all about. My. Yeah. Yeah. There's. Friends. Yeah. Well, if Cindy had just gotten. A. Paper. She has. Want to. She's. Got. Another. Piece. Of. Products. For. In. The. Sprock.
I. Do. It's. She.
Yep. Off. It.
So. We. Had. That. Was. For. The. She.
Yeah. I'm. Also. Free.
Is it? The. Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. I don't know. The. Two. Because. I. I got. D. The man. That. Says. Those. Yeah. If you're. Chat. Wrong.
Yes. Why? Yes. So. It's. Your. Home. I was. Spending. Her. Very. Old. But.
They would. Show. That. Time.
Sale. Oh. Yeah. Oh. We're. Going. Like. My. Man.
So. Now.
Through the editorial process and the legal analysis. They sent a list of questions, which I emailed those that are. Like the zoning commission, I sent them a list. I could answer quite a few, I think I sent. Do it Andy and to Kevin. They want, they would like that done by September twenty fourth. So it's moving on.
Suzie.
Richard Palmer. Contacted me about information, why was Crockett's, why did Crockett's get its name or how did they get their name? So I sent him several pieces of information about the people, Crockett's station, Sterlingdale Station. The Crockett's family and so on. We had a memorial day ceremony in Fairhaven. Celebrating. The service of Korean War veterans. Continuing the work for George McRaw. Of Texas, for his information on Sterling Civil War veterans, especially in the one eleven. Infantry, I've probably sent well over a hundred pages of things by now. While we continue with a couple of months at least. Chris Cummings contacted me for information on the McAllister family. And on the layout of Sterling Center Cemetery, since he spent. A couple of hours in there and couldn't find his ancestors graves. They're in there. We have a fairly new resident, John Farley, who came and asked information about Crockett's as well because he lives there. Or did the name come from Crockett's, our nature center and historical society? Earl March wanted information on the Hunter Tenant House and Barn and. That was later handled and now Mr. Pierce lives there. And today he wanted a photo of the inside of Poppy's store.
So we're getting people from all over the country.
Yes, we are. He's from Las Vegas. Yeah, that letter came into Andy.
Historical Society League.
Yes, the board trust will meet tomorrow night at the Halle Sweet Room. Tuesday, the fifth, we have a circle. Society program that will be at the Rula Schoolhouse at seven P M. It'll be Ruth Bradley, our county historian. And she'll be speaking about the overview of the seventeen seventy nine Clinton Sullivan campaign. And our first Sunday, July seventh. Is our opening day to schoolhouse, the hours are one to four. And it will be open. Eight Sundays. This year and we're also by appointment. If you might want to see, give us a call.
All right. We move on to committee reports. First up. Water Karen.
So. We have a meeting with Barry to catch up. With. Ian is no longer part of the. C two A E. So. We're just going to verify like the details of what's going on with the transition with him not being there. And we're waiting for. The Google for some agencies and we were looking at. The end of August, I think it's the last time estimate for. All the projects go out to bed if everything goes up properly. And I'm going to be talking to Doug Miller to have him be more involved with it. Later on this week as well.
Our emergency services.
Nothing new, we've not met since our last meeting.
Frank. Yes. Good evening. You've received the report there, the monthly report and that. Just want to thank. The trips are going pretty well with that too so far. And. And two fourteen, this will probably be in our next month for report, we had a. We had the seniors in the know. But we had two, two people representing the. Called the statewide. Statewide advocacy group and they did a, they did two things, two, two things happened, once in the morning, it was a fraud and scam awareness. They went really deep in. How, how people can senior citizens at a phone call or just talk to them and. The type of language that they would use to, just to get, just to get their capital and so the next thing you know, they walk away with about a hundred thousand dollars from these people. It's pretty interesting in the, the way they did that and then we had patients rights and that in the afternoon, we had lunch doing that. Patients rights. I think that was really good. When you go to the Asheville and stuff like that, there's a lot of things in there that. People don't realize and especially, I don't know how the seniors know any of this anyways, you know, you just don't know. And that's what we're working on right now to make sure these. And let's see. Another thing, the farmers, the officer, the agent will be doing the farmer's market coupons on July eighteenth at the choir house. And that's where we go a little bit of a good deal, so. And also that'll be the day of our picnic. Senior picnic will be in July at the church, at the church street pavilion. And I just, I just want to take a special thank you to Suzie. For what she did in the matter that they're, for agents of the veterans, she did one act for Jeff and they only have all the names and. All the stuff she had to do, she, she really did a great job on that. Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you, thank you, Sue.
And then one other thing, two other things. Well, yeah, we'll do the agent report right now. They, they dropped two games over the weekend at Boston and I died and that was, that was a heartbreaker there for all. Not for me, but anyways, they got, they got a good series coming up now, we're gonna play Baltimore, that's second place team, right now they're a game and a half ahead of Baltimore. So this should be a pretty good series coming up. And then let's about it, well, I think it's something else, I don't want to take the time to work for what you do for us agents.
Thank you, thank you, Sue. Frank.
That's the next one.
Frank, you missed one important update, Wednesday Garrett Cole comes.
What's that?
Wednesday Garrett Cole comes back.
Oh, yeah, I didn't do that.
See, I have to do. Uh zoning commission.
Uh we met recently and again, we're kind of watching what's going on with the village of Fairhaven. Because they too, the village is looking at. Some possible laws regulating. And so I know I attended the reading that they had, the public, the public hearing of the village of Fairhaven. So we're not scheduled to meet again, our little committee until. I think it's end of July. So we're just following along with that, but I, we're going to be changing our focus from short term rental to. The eco three sixty. Because we ended up with, I think about fifty. Items. Right, it's strictly the land use regulation, so we'll. The commission will take a look at those and see if we can figure out some answers.
Okay, and then. For all of the committee members, just want to give. An update that next month will be the six month mark for when we started the committee, so we'll review at the next meeting, the committees. Okay. And I get a motion to accept the May twentieth, twenty twenty four minutes. I get a motion to accept the June sixth meeting, special meeting. Supervisors report.
Can I just say a clarification, I know it's okay, Charlie mentioned. But looking at New York Glass, where it decreased by ninety thousand, so in Fund A and. Fund B twenty five thousand, I'm just looking for an explanation for the decrease in the.
Yeah, transferred it for the truck. Because they paid for the truck.
Right. You could take it from A and B and wow, whoa.
No, 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 we took it from New York class.
Okay.
I don't know what each specific.
Well, it's in the supervisors' report, New York Class, it decreased by ninety thousand.
Right, that was, yeah, that was for the truck.
And the B fund decreased twenty five thousand. And then the D A fund decreased forty thousand. So that's what we're just wondering. I think the ninety and the forty was for the truck.
Yeah, those.
That, that's.
Well, the ninety, I know about, I know the ninety was for a truck.
So the truck money. Have you taken, we have this reimbursement money. We have to pay it, that's gonna be all chips money, so that's, we're gonna be reimbursing the state for that. But the twenty five thousand was for, probably for the landlord and the headband that we took out of the equipment user.
Oh, that would have been last month, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because we did it the month, okay, yeah, you're right.
So the, what I'm saying is. The hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
This, that's gonna be reimbursed by the state of New York, but I need to get the cancel check back, I have the invoice, I have those things together.
Right.
I submit to the state, the state. How does it track it when that money go back in?
So it's sort of like borrowing the ninety thousand from Fund A, is that what you're saying or not?
Why, I'm not sure what that did, but I'm just saying, those are the numbers to pay for the truck.
Right, so it'll be back in there once we get the chips.
So once we get the chips money, I mean. Because it's, chips is a reimbursement program. We have to pay upfront and then we get the money back.
I just, I'm trying to understand the cross. Funding, so Fund A, Fund.
So, because it's a fall truck, but it's also a summer truck, that's probably why the DA and DB account.
Well, it's not DB though. So it sounds like money from the A fund, I can ask that.
Yeah, that's a fact, but what I'm saying is the numbers line up, that's what that means. Because the last one, when we paid for the truck.
Right, right. Sorry. We get, yes, you did.
Okay, correspondence. We have quite a bit here. The. Two eighty four agreement to the roads were. That's with the, I mean, has everybody had a chance to see that and understand it?
Did you do a brief explanation?
Sure. So. So the. Explanation is, it's broken down on this page here. Is to the costs. So. We're gonna do Kramer Road, Green Road, Nichols Road, Wilby Road, these roads listed. This is the cost. Comes out to seventy eight thousand. And then. We got Stevens Road, the Old Town Barn Parking Lot and Walgreen Road for forty one thousand eight oh eight. So that's the estimated amount, so that's where. We get the four hundred and fifty thousand at four eighty three.
Great job of breaking down the house for the model, so I got it further if you guys want, I could. I give you the rates and everything else, I didn't know if you wanted to just be bothered with that.
You did fine, I appreciate that, I always wondered. We have the report from Silver Seniors. CEO report. The assessor requests to increase the income limit for qualifying residents. Please review this. Because we are going to. The. Addressing it at the next meeting.
Okay, it would be nice to. The assessor could be here and.
Right, this is, this is her documentation, this is her letter, and then we're gonna address it at the next meeting.
Correct, and she'll be here thinking to do that.
I'll, I'll request her to.
Right, that would be nice because if this.
Well, no, a lot of that document is examples, the, the one page right here is, is a summary exactly of what she wants. And it's all broken down as to what, and then these other documents are all supporting, showing what the communities around us have done.
Correct.
And then how the laws are.
Correct.
So. But this, this page here is essentially what she's asking for in detail. Excelis letter regarding health insurance and an eighteen point one two percent increase to the health insurance cost for the employees this year.
Thank you.
Next year.
So is this why we're looking at an alternative?
Well, that's one reason, yeah, we were, we were looking last year and we wanted to switch last year, but we missed the cutoff. So weren't able to, but they did not raise their rates like this. On the plan that. Chris spoke about earlier.
Right.
Hopkins County, that's the, so the consortium proposal. Is in there, that's the new health insurance that they want to switch to. And then we have the Toma Grant Opportunities. And the Red Creek, the Way You Go Recreation Program Funding Letter. Annual Drinking Water Quality for twenty twenty three for District Three. CBA Minutes. Email from Christine Cantos regarding state bill S A eight three four. Regards, storage. It's the bill right now is not in process. Not dead, but not in process. But they, they. They're selling it, it's almost dead, but it's not dead. Letter from the date, state DOT regarding the Onionville Bridge. And then the heating and cooling proposals for the. For this building. I got. Several proposals, they're all in there. I had three different people come here, but E and V never sent in their proposal, they came and did the measurements and everything, but never sent anything to us.
Are we gonna be acting on that tonight?
Yes. We have Ellsworth provided three different solutions. And home state provides, home state. Well, Ellsworth did, oh yeah, Ellsworth did for interstate. Okay, you guys wanna discuss these now? We can either discuss them now or discuss them in the goal. You'll see the. Numbers associated with the bids circled in the top corner. For Ellsworth. So bid, the. Estimate number one. Is the cheapest, like the move. Yes. And that is the bare minimum, that's putting a. A new heat pump outdoors. And that's the fifty one thousand, that's bare minimum. And we would still have two separate heating systems. So the, the old part and the new part would be separate. The other two that were supplied. Or the other three estimates all combined the heating systems. The number two from Ellsworth combines the systems and. Number three is actually what. Number three is what Ellsworth recommended, they, they did the others as options. Number three is what they recommended is the best solution. That combines the systems into one. Air conditioning, I mean, they're gonna stall, we gotta have a split here, but it'd be one air conditioner for everything else, because we don't have place for that for the kid here. And then. The fourth one. Is all. Propane forced air. No. Yes, yes, yeah, number three is a heat pump. Number four, the heat pump, but it's got a bigger, it's got a backup force air. And then. You will see. Interstate. One thing I want to say about. Interstate, because this quote is very. Very low compared to all of Ellsworth, and we didn't hit E and Vs. But E and V came through, they were here for what? Forty five minutes, an hour, did measurements, Ellsworth has been here. They're the ones that came and rescued us at the end, they came back and spent a good hour and a half here. The guy from Interstate was in and out of here, didn't do any measurements and gave this quote. Within fifteen minutes of leaving. And he wasn't even here a total of ten. Yeah, Ellsworth used to do a lot of work for him. So, while we did receive the quote, it's significantly less, and I don't think that it really addresses what the towns needs. And like I said, I wish E and V submitted theirs, but they didn't. So.
So the bare bonds. Third system, that's the fifty one thousand, eighty nine dollars, eighty nine cents. And what they are recommending. For the best answer, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. Well, the best answer is number four.
Right, which is what I'm looking for now, that amount is sixty seven thousand.
Yeah.
And that's combining and.
Yeah, and I want, I want to also, like, you know, we are in the process, we are, we have grant money. That we can use on this. We're in the process, Tony is working to get the money. Right now, we're just filling out paperwork, the grant that has been given to us, and that's for fifty thousand. But it's matching, and that's to do windows too. So we do have that fifty thousand coming.
Alright. Replacement panels?
I don't have.
There's a direct.
This was, this was a grant that was given to us in two thousand. Twenty, two thousand eighteen was when it was applied, it was given to us in two thousand twenty. And no one's responded to it until now. I stumbled upon it and the money is still sitting there, so.
Is this to make the building more energy efficient?
No, it was, it was given and they, they had sent emails, they send emails every year, next year would have been our last year where we would have just lost it for not taking it. But the grant was applied for back in twenty eighteen.
Well, Ellsworth is local.
Yeah, and they are, they're the only ones that came when we were. Efficient and dependable, I'll say that.
I think that would be their importance.
Yeah, I agree. And, and we offered. No, that's, but they didn't seem to have an interest, so. He was here, he spent a long time here. And I told him when the meeting was, and this was a month ago. And the, I guess he was serious when he said, I said, well, we don't have the meeting until the seventeenth, he says, oh, don't tell me that, you won't get it till the seventeen. The guy from E and V, I thought he was kidding around, but I still haven't got it. Okay, so new business. Really exciting, open the fuel business. So we have.
First bit that came in. The colors gas. Looks like it's. Is. Two seven seven six, their diesel. Well, I should say it's a dollar. I start over, it's a dollar forty three. Excuse me, point one four three over. Now they went by the Bruton Buckeye Rack. We usually go by the. The. But I'll, I'll be.
Did they specify, did we specify that?
I think so, we did. So commit one, four, three over for kerosene. Yes. It was twenty two five seven. Night kerosene. Propane. Sixty cents old. But it's the thing, it's, you wanna take a look at this? Next one was. And I think we were supposed to get. Not including statement in there, that doesn't have it, does it, or does it at the end? not including statement in there, that doesn't have it, does it, or does it at the end?
No.
Here's our here's our uh,
Well, that's the specs.
They went by Syracuse, OPIS. Diesel is eight one five. Kerosene is twenty-five.
Yeah, see, you got it listed right there.
Yeah. And none of them did that, di kerosene, it's point twenty-five. OPIS is one two nineteen. There's no propane out of here.
Got bid from E and B.
Okay, so your will be point thirty. Diesel to be point zero four. We got the diesel. But they did, everything was uh, di kerosene would be point four four five. But that company did not go by
Did they go by?
We went by the dealing rack first too.
Ball Street.
Beating rack first, I wonder if, does it differ?
Well, the
Okay, E and B got the di kerosene though. Gasoline. They got the gasoline. Does it stay? Uh, point two two five zero. Any other ones? Uh, di kerosene. Yeah, I got that. Okay. Is point six seven five. Yep. They ran over soccer.
So.
I have not. They're gonna bid whatever the is for the day of delivery, they go sixty cents higher.
So that's what they're reporting.
Right, but it changes every day.
Right.
So it's delivered. So it's gonna be colors with propane. And these are the guys, the guys, these are I'll tell you what. So.
We said that.
Yeah.
Next order, new business is the flagman shanty. So basically, what that is, is the historical society um, was given a flagman shanty, and they want to put it on uh, the property over here. So that's gonna require just an update to the lease. Agreed there. Um, but they wanna put it over there, Lee knows all about it, if anybody has any questions. Tompkins County Health Consortium, that's the health insurance. Um, any discussion on that? Any comments? Chris is here.
And come for whatever Chris takes as best for Chris and uh, all, all are, all of them reviewed it together, okay, so if they're okay with it. I'm okay with it. Yeah, by my. It's for them, not me.
Yeah, the guys are happy with it.
Yeah, we actually.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's the other thing, so we don't, under this one, the town doesn't have to match the health savings either.
It's same coverage?
Yeah.
They'd be better?
Better, better coverage.
Does it include dental?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there another one? There's E and B, there's colors. Yeah.
That's better, I was Good to say, I know, I saw you open one.
Yeah, I did open one, but I didn't.
Toma grant opportunities, Joan, would you wanna talk about that or?
Well, you, um, it's in the correspondence package, there's a number. And so, um, so Richard Cunningham with Toma um, responded with two possible sources of funding, one was the grant for um, looking at the grant money for improving the ports down at the park area. And possibly converting to one of the ports to a pickleball court, which is very popular right now. Um, possibly improving the surface. And um, possibly finishing the chain link fence, some of that chain link fence has been there for decades. And possibly look at replacing that or not. Um, and with the kind of money, I know that uh, when I talked to Mr. Cunningham, he said, if we were just looking for twenty thousand dollars for the grant source he was seeking, then probably wouldn't be worth pursuing, but if we thought bigger. So I'm just putting it out, I don't think the answers, but if we wanted to think broader with that little area, consider it on Williams Road, um, possibly look at the picnic table, make some improvements and get more money, and it's a matching grant, fifty fifty matching grant. Um, so just, that was one that he talked about. And the other had to do with housing rehabilitation, which we've not done in years. Offered in years and a ton of Sterling outside of the village.
Right.
And that was well received when we did, did do that years ago, but anyway, so, um, it's kind of very react with that, and I know Andy, you said that you've uh, thought there were some other grant sources. That uh,
There's funding.
Right, right. Funding or grant?
Funding from uh, well, I know Claudia Tenny's got some available.
Right.
In her, in her office.
Right.
So.
Right.
Through the state.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just putting it out there and seeing where folks wanna go with it.
Okay.
Right now, I think we budgeted ten thousand dollars. And the one gentleman we spoke to in terms of the service, the court service, um, I believe Kurt, did he save like forty thousand dollars?
That was total project cost.
Right. Right.
That's professional grade pickleball court too.
Right, right.
I don't know if we need to go.
We're just looking for this.
Right, so that kind of like, whoa.
Like what other things can be done?
Well, we got, there's a basketball court already there, there used to be, wasn't there a tennis court there?
Two courts there.
Two courts, yeah.
There's probably room for one more court. So, or even has a ti- regular tennis court, and inside the tennis court, they had line stated for pickleball, so a kind of spoke.
Yeah.
So.
There's enough room here then.
More there. And.
Well, yeah, we were thinking, one picnic table down by the crazy. Okay. Alright.
Yeah, I was just concerned about maintenance, but who was gonna maintain? To me, is it J R guys?
It shouldn't be much maintenance more than like the basketball court is. The net would be the only thing to date down.
So, mowing the grass is gonna be the biggest.
Yeah, mowing the grass, but there to do that.
Should it be garbage cans there for water valves, two water valves, no nothing?
I would do carry in, carry out.
That's what I'm asking, is that gonna be the president?
It's, it's essentially gonna remain what it is down there now. It's just, you got a big cement pad with nothing on it. And, and the kids go down there all the time, there's kids down there all the time and families. But that's why we also wanna be careful with making it that same surface, because one of the big things that they do down there is parents love to go down there and teach their little kids how to ride bikes, safe and fly. Perfect, so. Okay, um, resolutions, resolution to pay the audio vouchers.
I'll make that motion. Karen.
Yeah.
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 Yes. You got a resolution to close the public hearing? I'll make that motion.
Karen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Yeah, Andy.
Yes. Resolution to board to sign the two eighty-four agreement for roadwork.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Carl? Excuse me, Karen?
Yes, Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't switch it up on her.
Get a resolution to change the July, oh, except, mark it up.
She's not quite ready yet, let's do that after.
Alright, we can just remind you.
Yeah.
Resolution to change the July regular meeting to July twenty-second and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such meeting. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Karen?
Yeah, Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah.
Andy?
Yes. Get a resolution to modify the fee schedule to update water districts, permit new connection to existing public water lines to five hundred dollars and add meter pits at twelve hundred. This is in line with what everyone else charges, and we do not have that. Well, we have one, the, right now currently, uh, the water line is fifty dollars listed price, and everybody else is five hundred, but that also covers a lot, so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen?
Yeah, Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yeah. We got a resolution to accept the heating and cooling bid for the town hall? Oh, for Ellsworth.
Ellsworth for your board.
Okay.
Number four.
Number four. And make that motion. I'll second that.
Karen?
Yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Resolution to authorize the Sterling Historical Society to place a railroad flagman shanty on the town's property.
I'll second.
Karen?
Yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
You were hard to read that.
I'm gonna alright, so get a resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the updated lease agreement, including the shanty. The terms are listed in the document. Um, you can read them. It's the current lease, just including the shanty. Make that motion.
I'll second.
Karen?
Yeah, Carl?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Number ten, eight is dead.
Yeah, number to the New York State Senate Bill S, that eight one, eight five one two uh, that we talked about last month, that's dead, so we don't need to move on that. And then, and the actual time. You done with that?
Yeah.
Let's, let's okay. So.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Okay, so, under ten. No, I'm gonna read the first, three sec, well, I'm gonna read the title and the purpose. Okay, so local law number one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, section, well, title, section one, the local law, maybe cited town of Sterling Road Preservation Law. Uh, number three, the purpose, section three, purpose of this local law is to maintain the safety and general, general welfare of the town residents by regulating commercial activities that have the potential to adversely affect road right of ways. Well-maintained roads are important to the economic well-being of the town, commercial endeavors such as timber harvesting and mining are also economically beneficial, this law is not intended to regulate such businesses, the intent is to protect the public right of ways from damage, the town board of the town of Sterling hereby annexed the following road preservation law pursuant to the provisions of the municipal municipal home rule law. Nothing contained in this chapter shall be deemed to limit the right to farm as set forth in Article twenty-five A A of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, nothing contained in this chapter shall be deemed to unlawfully interfere with the interstate commerce. I get a resolution?
I'll make that resolution.
I'll second that.
Karen?
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah, Andy.
Yes. Y'all didn't want me reading all that, but.
In my understanding, that's what's updating.
It's, it's, yeah, it's just changing, because the prices in there were from two thousand eighteen, so we just updated it to the fair market value. This is, this is, this is it, right? Okay, alright, number eleven. Resolution to submit an application to join the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Resolution to submit an application to join the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Where is the town of Sterling? Has performed due diligence for the response, reason, responsibility. It accepts the membership in the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Sterling Board hereby directs its officers and appointees. To take the following consortium membership applicant, applicant steps.
I'll second, yes, I'll say.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah, Andy.
Make a motion to adjourn the.
No.
Oh, I forgot, see, I forgot. Okay, so. I have for the fuel bids, I have, uh, E and V. For diesel. I have E and V. At point zero three. Uh, kerosene died, point four five for E, or point two five for E and V. Yeah.
You got it wrong. Yeah, E and Vs are, E and V and E and B, oh, whatever. Which is, which is which?
This is the last paper that being.
That's how, or that's, uh, your show.
That's not.
Sorry.
Alright, so E and V.
Okay. E and V got the fuel oil.
Yeah. Diesel went to E and V.
Yeah.
And then. Di- kerosene goes to Melco.
Let me just check it.
Clear goes to Helen.
Yep.
And then gasoline goes to E and, or no. And propane goes to Helen.
She doesn't have propane either, I don't think.
Which one? Color.
Okay, oh, cause I didn't circle it. Please note that the gasoline. Okay.
Yeah, so it still was. Okay, so that goes, so propane goes to Helen. Yeah.
Approve the fuel man.
I'll second that.
Karen, yeah, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
John, yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Make a motion.